Joint Committees on Labor and Technology and Higher Education. It is Tuesday, February 13, 3:00 PM agenda. Decision making on one particular bill. Senate Bill 3317 relating to collective bargaining. Okay, I believe we're gonna move it as a Senate Draft One and Chair?
Yes, so I am proposing that we amend on page two. The grad assistant has a definition. Grad assistant means students in a renewable, part-time academic appointment with responsibilities of teaching and research in their unit of hire and have roles as professionals, albeit an apprentice nature in the university degree and everything else. Oh, I believe a defective date, July 1, 2055.
Just go 2055.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so recommendation is to move as a Senate Draft One. Any questions or concerns seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
SP 3317 asked for amendments to Chair Voltsai. Vice Chair Voltsai, Senator Hara, excuse Senator Lee, excuse Senator Pabella.
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, same recommendation for Higher Education Committee members. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, Chair Voltsai.
Chair Voltsai, Vice Chair Voltsai, Senator Fukunaba, Senator Hashimoto, excuse Senator Pabella.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes our joint committee hearing. Thank you very much.
We are on our 3:01 PM agenda. Today's Tuesday, February 13 in room 229. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the Committee will convene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, 22:15 at 3:00 PM in this conference room, room 229, and the public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. There is a two-minute time limit per testifier. And so with that, we will start with our first item on the agenda, Senate Bill 2060. This is relating to agriculture. It establishes an educational support associate position within the University of Hawaii, Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources Kona Cooperative Extension makes an appropriation. Our first testifier, Anna. Anna, I could never say your last name.
It's okay, sometimes I forget as well.
I could say Anna W.
Anna W., yes, it's fine.
Thank you, Anna.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Senator. I'm Anja Pietorek and I'm the interim Dean of College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. Thank you so much for providing me opportunity to testify in support of this bill. This bill is very important to our coffee industry. As you know, the coffee industry is preferred higher commodity when it comes to the value in the crops in Hawaii. And it has been, just like any other agricultural crops, have been really influenced by pests and diseases. And at this point, SITAR only have one extension agent that is assigned to coffee and over three crops and that is based in Kona. And then we have another one or two faculty who are working on pests and they fly to Kona when needed and are based in Manoa. So what this bill is asking is to provide one APT position who is going to be based in Kona to help that one extension agent and the rest of the faculty that are working on coffee. Thank you for opportunity to testify and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. We do have two, four, six, so let's see, 13 in support, only one sign up in person. Anyone here wishing to testify on this measure or on Zoom? Hearing none, members, questions? Anna, I have a quick question. So we passed a measure, Senate Bill 2017, giving you five administrative professional full-time positions at the College of Agriculture.
That was last year, you mean?
No, the latest bill.
Oh, so that's it. So the bill that you're talking about, we asked for amendment to that bill and we asked that to be changed to extension faculty. This is APT. So again, as I mentioned before, the two different bargaining units, different job descriptions.
So do you not have any vacancies?
As such, we really do not have any vacancies in SITAR. We have number of positions that are being advertised and recruit in the process of recruiting. We have probably 11 or 12 faculty positions that are being recruited at this time. I mean, we only receive them in fall, so we are interviewing. And when it comes to APTs, we even advertising or have nothing available.
So you don't have any vacant positions?
Okay, sorry, correct. We have two APTs that become vacant in December because of the resignation or retirement. But these positions are not in Kona and we need people to rehire in these positions. We cannot just give them up.
Okay, I understand. It's just that when you look at the situation the budget is in and what we're going through, we're looking at every way in which we can try and look at where can we eliminate or consolidate and so forth so that...
Yeah, I understand, but from, I just wanted to kind of put in perspective that before COVID to the August last year, so from before COVID restrictions started to the fall of August last year, SITAR lost one-third of its faculty and staff. So...
When you say you lost one-third, you lost the positions?
Positions, yeah.
So the positions were just vacant and money taken?
Some of the positions were advertised and the start of freezing, they were basically frozen. At that point, SITAR was recruiting large number of faculty and the recruitment was stopped.
But when you say that, is it because the administration took the monies from those positions and it's vacant or the positions were completely done away with?
Some SITAR position has been totally done away. Every time when the position of faculty position is open, it goes back to Manoa in that case. And again, my understanding is that Manoa lost the positions as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, I guess, Manoa at some point. Can we staff make a note to ask them about these positions? Where do they go? Do they go to some graveyard somewhere that never come back again and you gotta ask for new positions? Because I know we haven't deleted those positions and we can.
Some of the, I will let Manoa answer this question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jan, is that not your area? Is that your area?
No.
Thank goodness, right? You're saved. Okay, members, any other questions? If not, let's move on to Senate Bill 2508 relating to the University of Hawaii Revenue Bonds, authorizing the University of Hawaii to issue 300,000, 300 million, million in revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the construction, maintenance, and modernization of qualifying capital improvement projects. And we have Calbert Young, there he is, front and center.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members. University of Hawaii supports this measure, but I did want to make some points more clear from the testimony. So this bill is to preemptively authorize the availability of revenue bonds. There are, the university currently does not have any projects identified, capital projects identified for revenue bonds, nor do I understand that there are any projects or appropriations at the Legislature under consideration for revenue bonds. The process would be that if there should be any projects or appropriation that are identified that would want to be done via revenue bonds, you would have to do this bill anyway. So having this bill at the ready with a forward lapsing date of 2029 has it at the ready. That's why I call it preemptive. The university has previously had revenue bond authority periodically from time to time, not always. In fact, most of the instances, there are no revenue bonds that eventually get issued. It matters on if there are a particular project, it matters if there is a particular appropriation. You would have to do this authorization. You would also have to have an appropriation that identifies revenue bonds, and revenue bonds would also be subject to the approval of the Board of Regents. That's more technical information or education on revenue bonds, but...
So how long has it been since you've had a revenue bond?
How long since we did a revenue bond or had revenue bond authority?
Revenue authority, revenue bond authority.
So the university's last revenue bond authority elapsed in 2022, June 30, 2022, or '21, '21 or '22. And the university at that time did not, we consciously did not ask for revenue bond authority because there were no projects on the horizon at that time that we...
There's no projects now on the horizon, so why are you asking it?
There's, there are projects that potentially, always potentially, could be made available for revenue bonds, but again, it's preemptive in that if the analysis gets to the point where they make sense, you would have this authority at the ready.
Give me an example of what is on the horizon that may make sense.
So in my opinion, and not stating any, like, more formal than that, the discussion about student housing, for instance, those are potential revenue bonds. So the big thing about revenue bonds is you have to have revenue, right? So hence the reason you need, they're revenue bonds. There needs to be identified revenue to fund the revenue bonds. So revenue bonds don't make sense just for any old project. There has to be some revenue stream. So student housing is one.
Student housing don't make money though, right? So usually a revenue bond, you have to be self-sustaining, right?
In the current, the current scheme of UH, it would be difficult to see how they make money. That being said, there have been revenue bonds sold for student housing in the past. So there is revenue stream, but a number of factors have to go into consideration. In fact, the last revenue bond that was issued, so actually done revenue bonds, was in 2019 and that included some revenue bonds for parking structure. Now, parking, there is revenue because the university charges for revenue, so there is matched revenue to it. But as, again, as an example, and there have been other projects that have had revenue bonds from the university over the years that have an associated revenue stream. It doesn't make sense for every project, but that's why, you know, there are, what I see in my opinion, there is possibility on the horizon, maybe something may materialize, but we're not committed to identifying a particular project right at this point.
So the NOAA project, which is a P3, that's considered a revenue generating, right? I mean, what have, other than parking, what other projects that...
Bookstore. So bookstore, in fact, I can just quickly tell you what project, what facilities and projects actually have outstanding revenue bonds on them. College of Pharmacy at Hilo, UH West Oahu Campus Development, Cancer Center, Jabsum. The last two revenue bond, new issue of revenue bonds included Sinclair Library Basement renovation, and then I also mentioned the parking, the Law School, Manoa Faculty Housing, UH Hilo Student Housing, and then a couple of, you know, certain buildings around the Manoa campus.
It seems as though 90% of what you said, they're all losing money, right? The first three you mentioned losing money, UH Hilo dorms are losing money, pharmacy school.
So example would be the pharmacy, so in terms of finance, so if the state and the university was actually interested in financing a capital project, it's not that the revenues need to support the full amount of the debt service. So the example that I would give you would be things like the pharmacy school, Cancer Center, Jabsum, Faculty Housing, where in, like, say in the pharmacy school, the pharmacy school, I believe, costs $30 million on order to construct, but only 5 million of that was actually revenue bonds. The state put up geo-bonds for the balance. So UH is on the hook to fund the 5 million, and so there's revenue stream from the pharmacy school that supports that portion of the debt. Probably was sized that way so that there was sufficient revenues to support only 5 million.
Is there sufficient revenues?
They have been paying.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like the Cancer Center, what revenue, I mean, the revenue that they get in is barely paying for the debt service, right?
Yep, so that one, so the Cancer Center, again, the university and the state wanted to utilize, you know, revenue bonds to support the construction of the Cancer Center. So that is on the, that's on the hook of the university for issuing revenue bonds. But then the state put up the, put up a, the first charge of revenue stream, which is cigarette tax revenue, right?
Which has gone down.
Which has gone down, but the state's not on the hook for that debt service. UH is because it's via revenue bonds.
Yeah, but we're on the hook because every time you folks have a deficit or the money goes down, you guys come in to us to ask the Cancer Centers, they're with their open hands, they want money, they want another program, but they need funding because they're losing money, they want to increase the tax. So we do get, we are on the hook.
Yeah, but the state didn't, the state could have put up geo-bonds to satisfy the Cancer Center, but for whatever reason, it was identified with revenue bonds. So as an example, like, you wouldn't have been able to do that or if not for a similar bill like this that authorized the university to issue revenue bonds for it.
Members, questions? I have other questions, but I'll open up to any member who has questions. Okay, so what about all of our other CIP projects? And I believe I asked Jan a number of questions in writing about all of our CIP. So when do you decide to use revenue bonds versus the CIP?
Well...
Or use revenue bonds for something, like, you mentioned Sinclair. We gave you folks what, 55 million for Sinclair?
I believe so in that order. I don't...
And are we on budget on that? Are we...
I couldn't answer that. So the revenue bonds that I mentioned on Sinclair, it was the Sinclair Basement. So there's explicit revenues attached to the Sinclair Basement research. So that was, you know, why that project, the basement model was funded with revenue bonds versus it not included as geo-bonds to fund it. The current project is, my understanding, is geo-bond funded, but that's a student success center. I don't believe there's any revenue stream attached to that.
Okay, let me ask Jan if she can come forward. This is just about opportunity to talk about where our priorities are as far as these projects, these revenue bond projects. So we have 8 million for Holmes Hall, we have 5 million for the master plan phase of Kaikendal Hall, 8 million for admin office and parking. Does that drop money? Is that, that doesn't generate money for your revenue bonds?
Those are not revenue, those do not support revenue generating programs, at least as currently contemplated.
So the parking, admin and parking doesn't generate any revenue?
Actually, yeah, you're right, sorry. The parking would, parking would. So the 8 million would be to actually help...
Or could.
Could.
I wanna correct.
Thank you.
So this is a, so there was revenue bonds appropriated previously specifically for parking at UH Manoa, but the amount of revenue bonds that could be issued to support parking renovations was less than the amount authorized because there wasn't sufficient revenue stream to support the amount of revenue bonds, right? So you can only sell as many revenue bonds as there is revenue to support those. So you're not gonna take out a $1 million mortgage if you only have income to support a $450,000 home, right? So you can only borrow as much as you can afford. So that's an example. So on this one, I would say from what I've seen in the way parking is currently administered, there could be revenue stream to support additional debt, but that's a big could. It could mean increasing rates. It could mean, you know, taking out, waiting long enough to retire existing debt because they do have, they do have outstanding debt on parking already. So, you know, it's those types of things.
And that's what concerns me is all the projects that you talk about is the revenue stream because it turns out at the end of the day, we see a lot of these projects that are losing money and whether or not that revenue stream has been adequate. So I have some concerns. Also, your project on Kaikendal Hall, didn't you have another contract on Kaikendal Hall?
So before I assume this position, research does indicate that there was planning and design funding for Kaikendal renovation. I think it was in partnership with the Office of Energy, some type of federally recognized or federal agency, and the goal was to design a more sustainable Kaikendal Hall. I think a couple of things happened when that project completed. One, the, my understanding is that the technical design probably was potentially flawed or there was risk of it not being, that the building would not operate entirely as it was, I think, intended to or designed to. So there was risk there. But more importantly, there was a pretty hefty cost estimate associated with that and the campus at that time concluded that Kaikendal was not their priority and so it switched to...
What was that, what did it cost us? You failed to even mention this in your report to me, but what did that, what was that price tag that we paid? $2 million?
I was gonna say, I was gonna go out on a limb and say roughly in the order of $2 million.
$2 million, $2 million down the drain, decided whatever it is, we awarded the contract to Benjamin Wu Architects to fully renovate Kaikendal Hall. And then you guys changed your mind. And that's my point with this whole thing, all these revenue bonds, all of these CIPs, we just keep, you know, if it's money out of your pocket, then it would be different. Student housing, money is just flying out the door and we get nothing from it. And it's very bothersome when we know that we've had these dorms sitting there empty and my understanding is plans were in fact presented to the president and he nixed it, from what I understand, twice. So to say that he didn't know about it. But here we have, you know, $2 million contract, we awarded it, they gave us all the plans, forget it, you know, several years later, now you're asking us for, how much for Kaikendal Hall? Five more million dollars. And that's just for planning, right?
And partial design.
Partial design, total 45 million for the six-year CIP plan for construction. It's just very troubling on the United States. And so when, when and if we give you this revenue bond, do you have to come back to the ledge?
So I mean, so as I mentioned earlier, this bill only provides for the authority of up to 300 million, but there's, until a project is identified for revenue bonds, that would entail the legislative process in that it has to be appropriated. So what would have to happen is it would have to be...
Can you use your own, can you use your own money or use the foundation or somebody else's revenue bond, like you did for Atherton?
So this, this bill only provides for revenue bonds of the university. So with Atherton and NOAA, that's not even money of the state or debt of the state. Somebody else went to borrow money for those projects, not the university, not the state. This bill is if the university would issue debt to pay for a project. That would require, in addition to this bill, it would require the Legislature identifying that project and then identifying as the method of funding, MOF, revenue bonds versus, you know, any other source, general obligation bonds or...
So let me ask you directly, are you folks looking at the parcel that has the university's, university lab school on that? That whole parcel is a potential revenue bond project?
That parcel is being, is being currently studied for potential redevelopment. It's too early to identify what that development could look like or the sources of funding. So I wouldn't say that we would commit that it's gonna be revenue bonds. I wouldn't discount it yet, but it's way too early to identify the type of use.
So maybe this bond request is way too early as well?
If you're, if you're of that sentiment, again, I did, I mentioned, this is preemptive because there's no projects specifically identified. But if, if the university or the Legislature ever decides that you want to fund the project with revenue bonds, you will have to do this bill anyway.
Okay, members, any questions? Yes, Senator Kedani.
I'd be interested in knowing in the past five years or so, so any projects that the university have come before us asking for revenue bonds, how much revenue has been returned?
So, easy. So I've been at the university for eight and a half years. We've actually only done three revenue bond transactions during those eight-plus years. Of those three transactions, we've actually only issued less than $25 million in new revenue bonds over those three transactions. One project was the Sinclair Basement that I mentioned. Another project was the Law School Clock. It's called, I don't know what it stands for, it's acronym. So the Sinclair was less than, got my notes, it's like, less than 5 million, I'd be right, something on the order. Sorry, less than 5 million. The Law School was actually less than 5 million. And then the largest actually was parking renovations at UH Manoa and that was 15 million. So, and then all the rest has been refunding. I would say that without exception, all of the university outstanding revenue bonds, and there's currently approximately 360-plus, call it just shy of 400 million of university revenue bonds outstanding, all of them have sufficient revenue to meet debt service thus far, for all of them, all of them. And there's, you know, at least a dozen different specific facilities, projects.
So for like the parking lot, the faculty or students who are using that pay for parking and that pays for your...
Debt service.
Debt service?
Correct. Well, it pays for, so in the case of parking, they generate revenues by selling parking, parking passes, you know, whatever, but it pays for their operations. But it, it pays for their operations. Plus, it has to, they have to pay their debt, the debt service for outstanding bonds on the parking structures. So, um, a- as I mentioned earlier, the parking lot renovation project should have been or was desired to be larger than it was. But in the end, there was only sufficient revenue to meet a certain amount of new debt for them. So that's why it was sized, um, the way it was. So they only were able to accommodate less than, you know, twenty-plus million in new debt.
But the funding that was given was for a larger lot? Or it wasn't determined?
It was, so the university had, um, I believe like a hundred million dollars in revenue bond authority. So this was in twenty, this is like the twenty twenty nine, uh, twenty nineteen issue. The university had about a hundred million dollars in revenue bond authority. We were prepared to make available fifty million dollars legislative appropriation, MOF funding for a parking structure. But of that, that fifty million, um, couldn't afford, parking couldn't afford to take on fifty million dollars worth of debt. So the project had to be sized relative to funding. So less than twenty million dollars of new debt.
Okay, no other questions? Senator Alphavell.
So if this goes true and you guys get the funding, what, what projects are you guys gonna prioritize?
There's, yeah, there's no, there, there are no projects right now identified for revenue bonds.
So just, this is like, just, we're gonna have them and hold them and then when we get a project, we're just gonna use them or not? And then you guys still gotta come back, right?
Yeah, so, so this is literally, this is only like having like authority up to three hundred, it's not money, right? It's like you can, if you ever get there, up to three hundred million in authority. But what it's gonna take is you gotta identify what, what are these projects? None are identified right now. You gotta get legislative appropriation for those projects, which there are none. And you gotta get the legislature to identify that the method of funding for those projects is revenue bonds. So when you get there, you have this authority that's already done. You could wait, I mean, there's no projects, there's no projects identified, so you could wait. But when, whenever that may happen, you're gonna have to do this bill anyway. So that's why I'm, that's why I say it's preemptive because, you know, you have it at the ready.
You know, it is kinda scary. We don't have a project right now. We give you that kind of bond, right? Tomorrow you pull out your book, you have a project now. So we don't know. I don't, I don't see that you're doing that. But the question is, that's hypothetical, right? It's like this bill, still gonna come back. So it should be an as-need bill, right? If you don't have a project, you should do as needed. I mean, that's how I look at it because I'm not gonna end up funding a project that we don't want, like some more stadiums in a crowded area in, uh, Manoa.
Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, uh, I mean, I, I, like I said, the process would require legislative appropriation of a project and identifying revenue bonds as the method of funding.
But the public is a suspect. All of a sudden you're asking for three hundred million dollars. There's been talk about the charter school being moved and so forth. And all of a sudden they're saying that they suspect that that's what this is for. So just telling you what KIPE knows we're getting.
Yeah, well, they could be moved with or without revenue bonds.
Well, yeah, they could. Okay, no other questions, we will move on. And there are a number of questions on the CIP jam that we'll probably have a briefing on for the inner session since today our timing is.
Not today, okay. Got it, thank you.
But thank you for being here.
Just my clarification, it doesn't mean that I don't support the bill, I'm just trying to explain the hypotheticalness of another stadium, that's all.
Yep, I got you, Senator.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill three-one-nine-one. Uh, this is relating to technology transfer at University of Hawaii repeals a sunset provision in Act thirty-eight, session laws of Hawaii twenty-seventeen amended by Act eight. Special session laws of Hawaii allows the university to continue to regulate conflicts of interest and other ethical interest, issues for technology transfer activities it sponsors. Uh, Mr. Vassilis Sermos on this bill and the next one.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. My name is Vassilis Sermos, I'm the Vice President for Research Innovation at UH System. Uh, this bill pertains to tech transfer activities and actually the transfer of conflict of interest and conflict of commitments, management to the university and to the Board of Regents. It's not an exclusion. I wanna make sure that, uh, faculty members or activity, tech transfer activities are not excluded from Chapter eighty-four.
So basically, this, this provision has been in, in practice and we gave you a three-year sunset and this is going to sunset this year.
Correct, Senator.
Undo the sunset. And when we did give you this measure three years ago, we did put in a number of safeguards for the conflicts of interest.
Yes, so we do appreciate that because actually we, uh, work with the State Ethics Commission closer and in cases that they're a little bit more complex, we, we take advice from them. And I did go back to my staff and asked, uh, and they have reached out in several cases or a couple cases, half a dozen cases to the State Ethics Commission for guidance.
Have there been any issues or, um, or conflicts that you had to step in or that they had to be denied or?
We had a couple of those, yes. I don't wanna go into specifics, but yes, we did have a couple of those and, uh, we thought the guidance from the State Ethics Commission and using the bill as a, as a leverage for us to say no, that this is not appropriate was pretty powerful for us, pretty useful.
So what about the issue of nepotism? Because I know there were situations where you had husbands and wives and so forth that working on same projects or supervising one another or supervisor being partner with a subordinate in some of this?
I don't remember of that case. The case, I think, that you're referring to is when we have a faculty member that gets an outside contract through a small business innovation research grant, then can be a PI on the university side and PI on the startup. And that is not acceptable. We put a conflict of interest management plan, which we monitor extremely well to avoid any type of conflicts. We take the management either from the university away or from the private entity. Uh, and there are cases where in that particular incident, we had to actually not accept, uh, federal money to the university because we couldn't see a way to address the conflict of interest.
What happened, so you monitored this?
Correct, Senator.
So what happens when you're, you're, you have a predecessor here comes in?
Excuse me?
Where you have a successor, somebody else, are they gonna?
There, there are policies and procedures, so if I drop that, then hopefully the next person will, uh, will do equally good job.
Do members, any questions? Senator.
So is there one particular person at the university who follows the research produced and is being promoted?
Promoted or? We, we have a person that actually does the conflict of interest management plans. We have a, a research compliance officer to look on conflict of interest. Yes, that their job is just this. He hasn't been promoted, he has been there for, for some time.
The research that is promoted?
Yes, yeah.
And for commercializing?
Yes.
You know, who, who follows that to make sure that?
Yes, we have the Director of Research Compliance, Ms. Victoria Rivera, and we have an attorney hired under her, which her only, most predominantly her task is to monitor, uh, the research conflict of interest. Yes.
Okay, members, any other questions? If not, thank you. Why don't you just sit there because our next item is Senate Bill three-one-nine-two. And this relates to University of Hawaii Research Repeals the Innovation and Commercialization Initiative Program Sunset in Act Eight, Special Session Laws to Allow the Continuation of Innovation and Commercialization Initiative Program Established within the University of Hawaii.
Yes, so this, uh, actually pertains to the ability of the university to receive interest in the startups we promote and fund. We have some startups that they are, uh, within our faculty and, you know, sometimes we provide initial seed funding in order to do a proof of concept or a device. And in order for us to put some of that funding, we usually take an interest in, in those companies with the hope that either they're gonna make it big, either they're gonna be bought out, they're gonna have an IPO. It hasn't happened yet, but, uh, the essence is that we gonna invest our faculty and our students in order to be able to start their own companies and hopefully if they benefit, then we benefit.
So how often and to what degree do you invest in these, um, projects?
Uh, usually we run, uh, an accelerator, an incubator at the university. It's called the High Tide. Uh, it goes through a competition. We bring in one cohort per year. The size of the cohort, uh, varies between three to six, uh, teams. Uh, some of them have formed the company, uh, some have not. They just entered to see whether their idea has any commercialization interest. Uh, we do not fund them when they enter the accelerator. We start funding them once they make any progress, whether they wanna, uh, have a proof of concept, whether they do the market analysis. So we fund them up to usually fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per cohort, that's the maximum, depend on what, how mature they are.
And how many have we done?
Uh, we've done up to this point, I wanna say around twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, some of them have done well, they're, uh, they're around. And some of them, there are two ways of revenue stream out of these companies. Uh, some of them we get, we license the technology back that they have actually developed through the previous bill. And then we have royalties and we have two, three of those, which, uh, we have some really nice royalties. Uh, we haven't had an exit yet, but we have a couple of those, uh, which they have, uh, a lot of, a lot of potential because we try after we graduate them from our incubator, which is very early stage, to put them to accelerators within the state or out of state, usually with elemental accelerator, purple Maya. So they have done well picking up some of our companies and faculty and tried to, to develop their ideas.
So how much, how much money have, have the university taken in from all of this versus how much you've put in?
Uh, I wanna say on the licensing, we have made more than we have put in because it's a much faster return on our investment. Uh, we license that technology and, uh, and these companies produce, or they pay us, right? Every, every six months they have to pay us the license fee. So we have an instant or an immediate revenue.
So you, you show a profit?
For those we do, for the ones.
And where does that money go?
Uh, that goes back to the Innovation and Commercialization Special Fund that comes with this bill. And we use that money in order to pay for our patents, uh, to patent other technologies. So we turn it around.
Did you get any funding from the general fund or from student tuition or from the university general fund?
None for this, none.
Members, any questions? That, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
We're moving on. Senate Bill thirty-two oh-nine relating to University of Hawaii appropriate funds to University of Hawaii at Manoa College of Ed for the establishment of seven full-time equivalent positions and additional program costs for expanded teacher cohort program to fulfill the requirements of Act one-four-one. Um, we have. Mitsihiga for the Teacher Standards Board.
Thank you, Chair Kim. Mitsihiga, Licensing Specialist on behalf of the Hawaii Teacher Standards Board. We support this measure. We expect, we love the idea of expanding the cohort, um, teaching cohorts to every county and it needs funded. Very simply said, we wanna support, grow our own teachers and this will be a part of doing that. So thank you.
Do you know how much funding that is?
For this much? No, you'd have to ask UH.
Which I know.
I know.
Nathan Morata on Zoom.
Oh, hi, good afternoon. Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, members of the committee, Nathan Morata, Dean, College of Education, UH Manoa. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of HB thirty-two oh-nine, which appropriates funds to the university to fulfill the Act one-four-one session laws of twenty-twenty-two. Um, we are committed to expanding, establishing, expanding cohort. Uh, we will, we would like to also acknowledge the fact that by doing so, we'll certainly increase our pipeline of growing our own educators, as Mitsi just mentioned. And of course, the university will work closely with the Hawaii Department of Education and, uh, other UH system campuses to ensure that we, we can get this program up and running. So I'm available for any questions. And the amount, I think, we requested, Senator, I think, was six hundred twenty-five thousand.
Six hundred twenty-five thousand?
That's correct.
Thank you, don't go anywhere, I know I have questions.
I know, I will.
Kita Yashi for the Department of Education in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure?
Hello, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, members of the committee, thank you. Osatui, President HSTA testifying in support. As you know, our public schools are statewide and so we should be, you know, educating our aspiring educators statewide and having someone who's available on, in each county in person really makes a difference as opposed to them just having to go online to be able to get the support that they need. Thank you.
Christian Fern for University of Hawaii.
We wish to stand on our ready.
Thank you. Uh, again, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing non-members' questions? I have questions for, um, Nathan. Nathan, so I asked for your vacancies.
Yes.
So you have what, two, four, six, eight, eleven vacancies?
Uh, ten vacancies, including one APT position.
Okay. And so you can't use any of these for?
Yeah, these, these positions were approved to search specific for content areas. I mean, they would, they could be able to teach some of the content for neighbor island cohorts, but as far as coordinating the efforts on the county, uh, would not be within the realm of their immediate duties.
Okay, um, several of these positions have been vacant since twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-seventeen. And for some reason, all of a sudden, you're gonna fill them all by eight, one, twenty-twenty-four.
Well, we had, we had a few, uh, couple years, uh, two, uh, last year we had two failed searches, so those two, um, there's several that were, that's a sort of continuation of funding, uh, excuse me, searching for positions.
So these positions still have funding in them?
Uh, when the, when the act was originally created, there was no funding. And, uh, so I think that's why we're back asking to see if the legislature would be able to fund that Act one-ninety-one, uh, one-four-one to help us get to have these positions so that we are able to, um, build our, our, our neighbor island cohorts.
Yeah, no, I, my question was these vacant positions, do they still have the funding there?
I believe they do, yes.
Okay, so have the university taken other positions from you folks?
Um, in, in the, in the past, they have a, um, a annual sweep of positions. And, and then we go back, as Anya mentioned earlier, we go back with prioritizing our positions and which then aligns with some of the strategic initiatives for Manoa. And then we get our position back.
So when you say annual sweep, can you explain to the committee, what do you mean by annual sweep?
Oh, yeah, I can do it. It's called a centralized position management sweep of faculty positions. And what that means is if there are vacant positions, that's not. that's not filled for either a failed search or a retirement or someone leaves centrally at Manoa, all the positions are swept back to a centralized pool.
And who manages, who manages this centralized pool?
Oh, we report to like the Manoa budget team that consists of the provost and members of his team that would then look at our requests from the, from the units. And coupled with the priorities of Manoa, then they would return some of these positions back.
So you don't get it all back?
No, I do not get it all back.
So how many have you not gotten back?
Well, I can, I can just tell you, Senator, just from this past year, we, we got sixteen point seven five positions swept. And we got over, a little over half of that back.
So, and those positions were funded?
Yes.
The sixteen point five were funded? So they got swept, you only got half back. So what happened to the funds from the other half?
Well, my, my understanding, and this may be more of a Manoa question, but my understanding is that there are other programs and prioritizing of other areas too, that may require extra resources. And therefore, the Manoa campus then strategically redistributes positions to other areas based on enrollment, based on certain criteria.
Yeah, but then you got to come, you come back to us and ask us for positions. So it's like...
Yeah.
Right? So if you got back the other halves, would you be able to fund these, fill these seven positions?
Well, I think if we got all the positions that we, we allotted, then yes, we will be able to do a lot.
So I'm flabbergasted. How can we justify giving you positions when you, if you don't fill it all and then you sweep it?
Yeah.
Calvert, are you on the sweep? No? Lucky you. Do you, do you see what I'm saying, Nathan?
Yeah, I do.
You got all your positions back, so we should petition them back for these positions? Because we gave them to you before, in the beginning.
Yes, yes.
And then now you got to come back and ask us for seven more?
Yeah.
So you guys hearing this, are you in support of this? They have the position, but somebody decided, administration decided to take all these positions away. So now they got to come back begging us and then make us look like the bad people if we don't give it to you again. Right? Okay, Calvert, I'm waiting for you to come back.
Yeah, so Senator, so I, I think, so this, this is a campus management strategy and approach. But my understanding is, in the case of Manoa, there's a number of factors and issues that are going on. One is, is that there's, Manoa has vacant positions of which there are not funding. So, and there's also positions that are filled that didn't have initial funding. So they're moving around fundings to match warm body positions that on one level creates departments to have vacancies. There have been sweeps over the last four years, I believe, two years, there were vacant positions that were removed by the legislature. So that brought down the number of available positions. I think what Dean Morata's referencing sounds like, what Manoa does is annually or some periodically, if there are vacant positions at certain units or within units, there's this central pool that the campus will aggregate and then redeploy the positions into other areas that the campus has identified as maybe having a higher priority or need to fill those positions. So I think that's what's going on. It's about, you know, it's the same thing that in other circumstances where you've mentioned, why doesn't UH, you know, prioritize these vacant positions around to where they need them? And I think that's what Manoa is doing. So when, otherwise, there would be a lot more requests coming to system or to the legislature for, for positions to be filled because they're moving around these positions. The limiting factor from Manoa, as I understand it, is that they don't actually have funding for a lot of the vacant positions. So there's a, that pool is actually smaller, yeah.
So the reason there is not funding for some of these positions is because the legislature didn't feel that those positions should be funded. So UH went in and funded them anyway with their tuition funds, which they wanted us to pay for the fringe. That's one area. The other area, which we're trying to get a handle on, is that when you said it, it brought down, when we got rid of positions, it brought down the vacant position. Yes, because they were vacant for so long. And what happens is, the reason that a lot of these positions are vacant is because you guys take the money, Manoa takes the money from those positions and put it somewhere else. And when we question why people are getting raises over and above or then what, what we authorize, where did that money come from? It comes from vacancy savings. And so you kind of cockroach all the monies from the, from those vacancies and you give it. And so now, when Mr. Morata needs his positions and he want it back, you can't give it back because you already used his money up. Right?
That, I, I mean, that, that could be the situation and the circumstance. So I'm merely pointing out, my understanding is what's going on is, yes, on one hand, there are vacant positions. Two, on the other hand, there's these requests for additional positions with funding. So they're not actually the same. I'm not sure what Dean Morata's circumstance is if he had the positions. The key is if he had the positions plus the funding.
Right, but the funding was deleted. Some of them, yes, the positions were not funded. A lot of them had funding, but it gets used as vacancy.
Yeah, and again, that, that could be the situation. But currently, if, I think if what Dean Morata is saying, if he had the position, the count, and the money, could he fill them, right, for this particular purpose?
And he said yes.
Yeah, yes. But if he doesn't have the positions and they're in this central pool, you know...
But he should get it back because it was his to begin with. We gave it to him, we didn't give it to the central pool.
These particular positions, actually, the university never got. The, the act that passed for, to establish this neighbor island cohort was 2020, 20 or 21, I believe. And it did not include funding. And previous bills, last year, I remember, to try to get funding, also did not get. So these positions to do this particular program were never, were, were never funded.
Because we see all the vacancies and we say, you know what? Use it, use your vacancies for these positions. They've been vacant for so long. And so, you know, you want more positions. But see, that's the game that's being played. So you first sweep the positions and then you say, okay, you guys go get the legislature to give you more, more positions and more money. And then we give up to them and at some point, they go vacant and then they get swept again. It's, yeah, it's, it's crazy on how we're doing these positions and vacancies. In the meantime, you know, when I ask questions to the president and he says, oh, I'm within my ceiling, I'm within the budget, that's because you guys swept the money. And he's able to use the money for, for other, other decisions, which is, I don't know, it's, it's not as far as we know the priorities that's needed by the departments. Okay, members' questions?
I'm flabbergasted because when we create new positions or fund positions and fund the, give the salaries needed for those positions, it is our intent that, that money is be spent for those positions.
Or for that department, right?
Yes, so I, I don't know if we need a bill to make sure that the university and everybody else understands that they cannot cockroach money from other departments because they have a need. And so the other department goes dry because they don't want the money already. So we need to figure out how to stop this from happening.
Yeah, and then we're accused by UPA that, oh, we're nitpicking. We're nitpicking on the University of Hawaii. It's crazy. Any other questions?
Just bring a read for the cockroaches.
No, hoi hoi, hoi hoi. Okay, there are no other questions. Let's move on to Senate Bill 2722 relating to cancer. This appropriates funds to the University of Hawaii Cancer Center to conduct a multi-ethnic cohort study focusing on social determinants of health, lifestyles, environmental exposures, and resilience factors of native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Filipinos. Requires the Cancer Center to seek federal funding to complete the study. We have Mr. Wenon from the Cancer Center testifying. Dr. Wenon?
Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this bill. This bill received a test hearing last year. And it's a Senate bill, as you know.
And you are, I'm sorry?
I'm Loic Lemarchand, Associate Director for relation senses. And I'm joined by Dr. Lanny Park, who actually would be one of the two faculty members leading the project. The other one is Dr. Ali Karmunakia, who cannot come today. As you know, this bill is to conduct a feasibility study in order for us to be able to show the most, to demonstrate that we can do the study and increase our chance to get funded by the National Cancer Institute, where we get our money for research, usually, actually, always. And we, we are here to answer questions, really.
Okay. We'll probably have questions for you. So Department of Health, leave testimony.
Thank you, Chair members of the committee. The Department of Health stands on its testimony.
Okay, thank you. That's the only, in person, anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Cynthia L., American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, in strong support of Senate Bill 2722. Thank you to the committee for hearing this important bill. All individuals should have equitable access to quality care and an equal opportunity to live a healthy life. However, cancer does not affect everyone equally. Cancer is the second-leading cause of death in Hawaii with 2,500 deaths each year. The year, this year, approximately 8,460 residents of Hawaii will be diagnosed with the disease. Cancer, cancer is the leading cause of death among Asian Americans and the second-leading cause after heart disease among native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islander individuals. Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders have one of the highest incidence rates of breast, lung, colorectal, cervical, pancreatic, gastric, and liver cancers among all US racial, ethnic populations. From the tumor registry in Hawaii, cancer is the leading cause of death in Filipino, native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander women, and the second-leading cause of death after heart disease for Filipino, native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander men. Filipinos have the highest advanced-stage prostate diagnoses. Native Hawaiians have the second-highest advanced-stage prostate cancer. Filipinos have the third-highest advanced-stage diagnoses after native Hawaiians in lung and bronchus cancer. Native Hawaiian male and women have the highest lung incidence rate. Native Hawaiian male has the highest mortality kidney and pelvis cancer. Native Hawaiian male has the highest mortality of colon and rectum cancer. For these reasons, the importance of collecting data on the social determinants of the populations of native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Filipinos will help to provide much-needed information on why these populations have higher cancer rates in the state of Hawaii. This data will help to find gaps in cancer prevention and care delivery that contribute to these disparities. We ask the committee to support progress against cancer by passing this important bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chelsea Gonzalez?
Aloha, good afternoon, hello. You have my written testimony. And I just wanted to highlight a few things, but mostly share. You know, I lost my auntie in 2013 due to lung cancer. My partner, he, he's a cancer survivor. My auntie Filipino, my, my partner Japanese, but survived, survived his childhood cancer. But he lost his own auntie to cancer, also Japanese Okinawan descent. And one of my friends, more recently, at the age of 23, this was probably a couple of years ago, 2020, he was diagnosed with a cancer. So young. Even my aunties, when she had passed away, very young, late 30s. I think I, the reason why I strongly support this bill is because there's a lot of questions as to why, there's a lot of data gaps. In order for us to take the right step in prevention, early detection, treatment, we got to find out those whys. And we have those data gaps, as Cynthia had highlighted. And one of the ways that we can do that is in finding out what those whys are and finding those data gaps is through having this multi-ethnic cohort study. And so that's all I want to highlight. I appreciate your time and opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward. You identify yourself.
Aloha, my name is Michaela McCullough. I'm here in strong support of SB 2722 relating to cancer. And as a young native Hawaiian woman and a member of the Westside community, to see this negative impact of health disparities, it's not uncommon to me. And some of the most common leading causes of death amongst native Hawaiians, as Cynthia and Chelsea highlighted, is cancer, heart disease, and diabetes. And as a granddaughter and a niece to those who have fought against these diseases and who have lost to some and some who are still fighting, this research would mean to me that there are people that still care about using their skills, talents, and their knowledge to do what they can for these people that I care about and the people in my community and your communities as well. To have research focus on this being done for multi-ethnic communities means that someone sees us. And thanks to the UH Cancer Research Center, we have experts who want to focus on our Hawaii people. By finding and researching these facts of our native Hawaiian communities, we can get to the roots of these problems and hopefully find more solutions. Last year, I came here and testified for this bill and asked that you fight this battle with cancer by naming like seventeen different people that I knew alone. Unfortunately, I come back this year. Sorry. I come back this year to ask you to help fight for eleven other people that I know, that I met at community cancer support groups. And one of them is, including my Auntie Gina. Who is like a mother to me. And she was diagnosed with breast cancer last month. And within the time from last year to this year, I also lost a seven-year-old cousin who was diagnosed with cancer and passed away last year. So young or old, healthy or not, cancer infiltrates our communities and our present and future generations of Hawaii deserve a shot at fighting against this disease. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for your losses. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing not members' questions? It's Senator Kidani, UH.
Yeah, the University of someone cancer. I hope you guys are eager to take on this task.
Eager to take on, sorry.
Eager to take on this task because it's something that has to be done.
Absolutely.
And so how will you attract the targeted group?
So we, you know, we have many relationships with native Hawaiians communities. Koala Mammo, right now, we are doing some projects in the state to reach native Hawaiians and help in developing screening and other preventive measures. But I think one would need to realize that there is research that needs to be done. First, you understand those differences in risk across ethnic groups. How, why, just looking at known risk factors is not sufficient to explain this excess risk that we see in native Hawaiians and Filipinos and Pacific Islanders? And why we need to design new ways to intervene and decrease their risk? So, you know, we are working with health organizations, with the Department of Health, to try to promulgate, promote known with, you know, prevention methods to decrease risk. But this is not sufficient. We need to... We need to be able to understand why there are this excess risk for a given level, level of smoking or for a given level of obesity that we see in native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. So it's this kind of research we have been engaged in doing for a number of decades. And we want to have a more, a new cohort with people who have been exposed to exposures that did not exist when we started our multi, first multi-ethnic cohort study 30 years ago, such as environmental exposures. As you know, we have been recent discovery of new environmental exposures, as well as we now have a focus and ways to look at social determinant of health, which we think is really important in those lower socioeconomic status groups. And so on. Do you want to add something in terms of how are we gonna?
We're gonna reach. So, in terms of, we do have our community partners, as well as, so Dr. Ali Kavonakea, who will be co-leading the project with me, has, has been conducting ongoing studies on both, throughout the island as well as in the neighbor islands to recruit people to understand different social determinants of health in terms of health outcomes.
So how long do you think it will take before you can start the study once you have your targeted group?
So, oh, well, this, so the study, the appropriation of funds would be, will help enable to conduct the feasibility study. So we would be putting applications into the National Institute of Health. Usually, they take about a year after the application is submitted. And then the study will be followed prospectively. So we can continue to obtain, we will be continuing to obtain and analyze data.
So it'll take about a year to start. How long will this study take?
So if, we would start to recruit people during those two years with the state funding. At the same time, we would apply for funding from NCI, that takes another year. And the recruitment of the entire cohort would take as much as four years. And we would follow those people for as long as 20 years, 30 years. And be able to be able to compare who developed cancer, who did not. And so comparing your exposures and questionnaire information and so on and so on.
Okay, I'm not sure I understood. So it'll, it'll take you two years or four years to start the study?
To start the study, it would, it would take six months, nine months to organize it and start to recruit. But the recruitment itself, to get a sufficient number of participants, would take probably four years.
Four years to recruit the members?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, to recruit all the members, four years.
And how many members you're looking at?
At least 30,000.
30,000 in our population or in Hawaii or other?
In the state of Hawaii.
In the state of Hawaii.
And we would be over, over sampling. So we would have more native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Filipino, Filipino's in the state. Since they have the greatest disparities.
Right. The Hawaiian population is small, so. Anyway, so 20 years, you'll follow them for 20 years?
If we are funding for 20 years from NCI, yes.
So when do you expect to get any kind of definitive information and results to have people that, people dying now?
Exactly. So it depends on the frequency of the cancer. For the most common cancers such as breast, lung, colorectal, prostate cancer, it would, we would have enough cases to start to do some comparison in about, in the first cycle of the grant, five years, six years. So like we did in our current multi-ethnic cohort study, you know, we have been doing that for 30 years with a very different methodology and with, you know, information that was collected 30 years ago. We, we know how to do it. The challenge, as you know, is to recruit those groups. And I think we have now the, the right partnership, relationship in the community to do that. So, and also, we think it's a good time to be applying to the National Cancer Institute because we have, we are more interested now in Asian-American, Pacific Islanders, and native Hawaiians. So we think it's, time is ripe to start this new cohort focusing on those ethnic groups, which really have a remarkable excess risk of cancer and who have not been studied so far.
I have several questions. So how much is this, how much are you guys asking for?
So as last year, we would like to request $500,000 for this year and as much for the second year.
$500,000 this year and $500,000 next year, so that's what you're saying, so a million dollars?
Yes.
And that is just for?
A feasibility study.
Feasibility?
Yes.
When you say feasibility, you're not, you're not bringing any people in, you're just?
No, we would recruit, we would start to recruit. So the goal is to recruit whatever, 1,000 or 5,000, if we are lucky, in two years to demonstrate to NCI that, you know, we have the mechanism, we have the participation of the communities, the relationships, to be able to recruit the 40,000 that we would like to have collected in, in four years. So and we would be starting on Oahu, using?
And how much would, would NCI give us, give you?
Well, we are requesting, we would be requesting from NCI so direct cost, about 25, 2 million, 2.5 million dollars, plus indirect costs that goes to University of Hawaii, as you know.
So you're asking for them to give you 2.5 million?
Per year.
And that would be to build the cohort? And we would continue to ask for more. We would continue to put in more grant applications, to continue to.
So I can give you?
You would keep asking us?
No, NCI.
NCI. I can give you the example of the current multi-ethnic cohort study that has been in existence for 30 years. We get about $2 million per year from the NCI. And around that, we apply for other grants to test specific hypotheses.
Okay, so what study is this?
The multi-ethnic cohort study.
I'm sorry?
Multi-ethnic cohort study.
Multi-ethnic. You have a study going on now, multi-
For 30 years, yes.
For 30 years.
With five ethnic-
But isn't this a multi-ethnic one as well? How are they different?
So this? So this would be different for multiple reasons. It, one, this would include Filipino, which was not included in the original study. The original, the multi, I shouldn't use the term original, excuse me, because it's not the same. The study, it's the multi-ethnic cohort, it, that started in 1990s, did not collect social determinants of health. And as we all know, that now, social determinants of health are risk factors for many cancers, as well as negative, adverse health outcomes. In addition, that those, some social determinants of health can be protective, they are, such as resiliency factors, and that cannot be studied because they were not collected at the time. Want to, oh. And then in addition, I was going to say that, as we all know, that there are now a new exposure sort of, such as vaping, a lot of things. And there have been some natural occurrences like, such as Red Hill. And these are all factors that we can capture by having an additional cohort.
So the original cohort was also built by sending questionnaires to residents of Hawaii and actually Southern California, half is in Southern California.
Did the state fund that first cohort?
No, we didn't.
We didn't get any money?
No, no, no.
Where'd you get the money from then?
Straight from NCI. It took us five years to get the grant funded.
So why, why in this case you can't?
Because we want to target people who are much more difficult to recruit. And so review, the peer review at NCI, the peer review committee is going to ask us, show us that you can really recruit those communities which are really hard to reach, especially to include in scientific studies. So we need to demonstrate.
So what other, what other cancer studies have you done, are you doing at the UH? That relates to, that relates to our local population?
So especially, specifically for native Hawaiian and Filipinos and Pacific Islanders, those are small studies that are done directly with the communities. For example, I mentioned a study to increase screening, to health education with them, to do, to increase screening. But we don't, which we need really a prospective study because it's the best design to test the type of hypothesis we do.
But doesn't that, that money we've given you folks, Cancer Center, can fund these studies? Isn't that why we give you the monies and the budget?
So are you referring to the cigarette tax money?
Yeah, I'm referring to whatever money is that, plus the 5 million from UH, the 5, the 4.7 million from the, from the revolved student, student tuition funds?
So those monies is really to run the building, to pay the bonds, and it's not for research. I've been at the center for over 35 years, and I've done all my research for grants, going to NCI, competing with the Harvard, Stanford, and
So that's why I'm asking you, why are we getting more grants for these multi-ethnic studies? Because I know a couple of years ago, we had to fund the bile duct cancer, which affects locals more so.
Exactly.
It's like, why?
And that was a great success. I really need to stress that out.
Isn't that what the Cancer Center should be doing with the funding that they have?
So I think the liver project is really a great example of how we were able to turn around. So the money we got for the legislature to grant.
The point is the funding, that isn't, we give you folks all this funding, we have the Cancer Center. So why aren't you folks using that monies to go ahead and do the demonstration?
Because the money that you, that you receive is to pay the bonds, the building, and utilities. We are not on Manoa, we pay all utilities, we pay all the hard work. And we have costs such as running our freezers, buying solid liquid nitrogen to keep our samples.
Don't you also have donations and don't you also have? Because when you, when they came before us for the early clinical trials, oh, all this money, we're going to get all this foundation money, all this stuff. We're going to use all this money from the tobacco fund. And yet, you got to come in to get these studies from us. It's like, why aren't you prioritizing this?
Well, I can tell you from the trenches, we are not, we don't have access to this money. This money is used for running the center and?
But running the center means research. That's what we put the center for. And if you're not doing the research and you got to come to us every time there's something. It's like, what is the residents of this state getting back for the tobacco taxes and all the money that we funded the Cancer Center for?
What you get is grants that we get from NCI. 150, 100, over 100 million dollars that we got using the multi-ethnic cohort.
Yes.
Going out and competing again with all the universities and land.
So you should use some of your budget.
And bringing that here to employ people and to, you know, do our work.
So you should use some of the budget, the $500,000, so you can start this cohort without waiting for us. That's part of your mission.
Well, it's, we thought it was a great opportunity to address a problem that has not been addressed yet and which is really serious problems.
And you should be addressing it.
Absolutely.
You should be proactive in addressing it.
That's what we are doing.
No, but you waited how many years? You owe 30 years on this other one. And now this one's going to take another 30 years. In the meantime, all these people be here probably might not be here.
Well, from the, the study that was 30 years, I mean, it's been continuously having findings. So it's not just that it took 30 years for the findings to be presented.
Why haven't you updated so that you could include some of these new things before now?
Because we didn't have the money to do that.
But you have the money to do early clinical trials.
Well, I'm not talking about clinical trials, I'm talking about this type of study.
Because this is all one pot of money. There's not a lot of money to, to go around.
Well, it's, it's for you to make, you know, to make a choice, only funding clinical trials, also funding prevention.
We want prevention.
Two different areas.
Okay. Any other questions?
So you're saying it's one or the other?
No, no, no.
Okay. Just clarify because the way you said it that way, it sounded that way, so.
No, 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 not at all.
Okay. Because you're getting the money for the research and you're going to do the research and then you, you know what I mean? So that's what she's saying, I mean. There's some of these things that you guys are asking for could have been set aside, some of the money in your budget, and then come to us and say, we started this program or we started this research, but we need some more money to continue. But then you guys come with a blank slate with no money in it and no effort on your guys' side. And then you guys expecting, not expecting, but presenting something like this because you guys know already, I always had been for it, but it's just a way of crafting it and getting it funded. But these guys have more experience than me in going forward and getting the funding. But what you're saying today is that you guys get some money, but you guys use them for that other research you just were talking about for the local community. Then you guys never did put nothing on the side for this coming study that was going to take another 20 years. You guys never had no seed money, that's what I'm trying to say.
No, what, what we are saying is that we have been doing this work for 30 years. And we have gotten results, you know, that have been very useful, that, you know, the Department of Health is using. And we are using in some small-scale studies as well. But what I'm saying is that the next step really to address those issues in those communities require investment so that we can demonstrate to the National Cancer Institute that we can study those communities. And it's why, you know, this bill would be very helpful. But something that I'd like to say also is that, you know, we are in Hawaii. We are studying our community, our populations here. It's very unlikely that any other centers in the U.S. would do it. We are doing it, it's our job, it's our duty. That's why we are, you know, it's what we want to do. I've been doing here, doing that for 35 years. But what we all, everybody should understand that we are competing with very large cancer centers, which are as larger as a hundred-fold greater than us. Most of them are not 100-fold, but maybe 20, 50 times larger. And we have access to absolutely incredible amount of money because we have clinical revenues, we don't have that, we don't have university hospitals. So we are competing with this type of people who come in, come into the peer review system at NCI with project, you know, demonstrating pretty much that, you know, the work that we propose to do is almost done already. We have preliminary data suggesting that what we want to do is, is right. So we, we come in and we are at a major disadvantage compared to those large centers. So I just wanted to say that because I think we have been very successful, actually, competing with them with very little means. And I think if the state wants to have really breakthrough in cancer research, there is a need to be, to be an investment there, especially in prevention where there is no, you know, there's no way to make money to self-fund the research. So I just wanted to say that.
I also add, I just want to reiterate because Dr. Lee Marchand did mention that it is a time that NIH does have invested in interest. So just this morning, there was at National Institute of Minority Health Disparities, there was a focused workshop on native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders, looking at what the gaps are. And it was brought up multiple times that there's a lack of resources in terms of data to do the adequate research to understand what are driving health disparities.
So who, who are you guys, I mean, I understand you guys are going to, who are you guys partnering with for some of this data? I'm just going to give you guys one quick one, you guys should be calling out places that does have native Hawaiians. Waimea Nalo Clinic. Waimea Comprehensive.
Yes.
Those are the areas that you guys should be reaching out to.
Yes.
Then I should give somebody kind of data, then come forward in what you guys want to be going because to me, it's just kind of confusing, for me, not for them. That's our chair. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, thank you very much. We're going to?
Thank you.
We're going to call the Committee on Higher Education back for decision-making, starting off with Senate Bill 2060. This establishes educational support associate positions with the University of Hawaii Tropical Agriculture. And the recommendation is to pass with technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye, Madam Vice Chair?
For Senate Bill 2060 to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto excused. Senator Cavella.
Aye.
This is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For Senate Bill 2508, this is relating to the revenue bonds. I'm going to recommend we defer for now, members. There's no project on the horizon, and they can certainly come back in anytime. So are there any objections? Hearing none. On Senate Bill 3191 and 3192, we're going to defer this indefinitely. No, I'm kidding.
On Senate Bill 3191 and 3192, we're gonna defer this and def, no, I'm kidding. 3191, recommendation is to make technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 3191 to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For Senate Bill 3192, this repeals the Innovation Commercialization Initiative Program, same recommendation to pass with an SD1 with technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Hearing no discussion. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 3192 to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Hashimoto excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For Senate Bill 3209, this is the appropriate funds for the Hawaii, University of Hawaii Manoa College, seven positions. I'm going to recommend that we do send this measure out. I am concerned about the way in which UH takes positions and so forth. So I'm gonna recommend we defect the date, we move it on to ways and means, and we can, they can look at it from more point of view of position counts and so forth. So any discussion? So defect the date to July 1, 2055. No discussion. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 3209, pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Hashimoto excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And finally, for Senate Bill 2722 relating to cancer, I'm going to recommend an SD1 to make amendments on the bill itself. I'm gonna second. So I know the measure is blank in amounts, we will put that in the committee report. But on page three, section four, and beginning on line 16, this is about federal funding. It doesn't have any amounts or any percentages there. So I'd like to at least stick in the language to say, University of Hawaii Cancer Center shall seek at a minimum matching federal funding to further, to further the study and additional funds appropriated by this act. So I want to make sure that we do in fact get federal funds or NCI funds or any other funds to at least match it, if not more, which I heard during the hearing, during the testimony that in fact there would be more. Any discussion? Hearing no. None. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 2722 to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Hashimoto excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And finally, members, we do have a 301 agenda. This is decision-making only that was deferred from our last meeting. And this is Senate Bill 3340 relating to livestock. This is where they would do a, conduct a study to assess the effects of heat stress on beef cattle. Because of this bill, I learned a lot about heat stress. I know many of us have heat stress and other kinds of stress, and I'm not sure that they're gonna study that, but the author of the bills recommended that the appropriation be $20,000 and also that we defect the date to July 1, 2055. Any discussion? Hearing not. Chair votes aye.
Pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Hashimoto excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that is all the business for today. Thank you, members. We are adjourned.